I don't have a microphone. Welcome everyone to the Carter County Board of Commissioners meeting, July fifteenth. Like to ask Commissioner Chadwick to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
All right, and this time I'd like to ask Pastor Wayne Warren of Hunter's Quarters Baptist Church in Atlantic to offer the invitation.
Everybody says it's Baptist, it's non-denominational.
Oh, sorry about that.
That means you won't take as long if you're not Baptist, eh?
Get me rich.
Hey.
Sweet lady there called me and told me that if I had any trouble, I'd call her, she'd give me directions. I lost her number, I have a flip phone, but I followed the crowd. Let us pray. Father, I thank you for this opportunity. Father, I know not why you chose me, but I know nothing is by accident. I have learned that you have a plan through everything. God, these men that are sitting here, they hear many requests, they have to be under a whole lot of pressure. Father, I pray that there would be unity among this group. The only thing we have to do is look around, and not only our country, but our counties and our school systems are in a mess. Father, it's because that we have not served you and let you lead. God, I pray these commissioners will seek you and that you would give them your wisdom, that it wouldn't be about individual wants, that it would be what's best for this county. God, I pray for each one here. Father, there comes times when people's tongues need bridles. And Father, there come a time in these meetings, I'm sure, and I ask you to put a bid in people's mouths and take the reins, that everything would be done in a peaceful, kind, loving, sincere, compassionate way, that they would seek you and your will. And I ask all this in the precious name of Jesus. Bless them, bless this county. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right, in accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before this board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved. Good?
I'm good.
All right, and if I'll just ask everyone to please silence or shut your, the devices off. Call for adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda a community college board trustee appointment.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda for this evening's meeting.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, got the adoption of the agenda done, the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, will you adopt the consent agenda?
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item number five is the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plain presentation regarding the 2024 Youth Voice Summit. Hello, how are you? Yeah, well, the public comment's after that. Did I miss it?
Yes, just a quick, just a quick photo op.
Okay.
Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you again for inviting us or accepting us being here this afternoon. My name is Dre Nix, I am the Senior VP of Operations and Programs for Boys and Girls Clubs at the Coastal Plain. I'm serving seven counties with seventeen clubs within our counties covered. This afternoon is my absolute honor and pleasure to introduce you to Thea Stanley, who's been a lifelong, first day walking into school, she walked into the Boys and Girls Club here in Beaufort. She is now a rising tenth grader at, in high school, and she'll be our representative from Boys and Girls Club at the summit this year. And I also want to make sure that I say Ms. Cedrica Corman, the unit director for the Beaufort Club, Beaufort Teen Center and Beaufort Elementary School site here in Carteret, is also here this afternoon. So I'm going to invite Thea up to, she wants to just present herself, she has a small speech for everyone. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Thea Stanley, I'm an uprising tenth grader at East Carteret, and I'm a member of the Beaufort Teen Center. My goal for my, for my future is going to UNC University, and I'm looking forward to our new code. Thank you, county commissioners, for your support.
Thank you. We're gonna, if you want to come right here, we'll, is that good?
You gotta make her proud, though.
Stand, stand, stand right over here.
There you go.
It makes us look better, anyway.
All right, I got one more, one more. Thank you for all your hard work. All right, item number six is public comment. Our first speaker is Nelson Paul. You'll have three minutes, if you would please state your name and address.
My name is Nelson Paul, my address is 307 Misty Grove Circle, Morrisville, North Carolina. My wife Diana and I split our time between there and our ancestral home in Betty. Diane and I both grew up in the area and both of us graduated from East Carteret High School. Back in January, I sent a petition to the county manager to be presented to the county, the Carter County Board of Commissioners. This petition made, was made pursuant to 136-62 of the North Carolina General Statutes. I'm not a lawyer, but a plain English reading of the statute allows a citizen to petition the NC Department of Transportation to make additions to the state transportation plan through the county boards. For those of you who don't know, this petition involves a proposal to create a highway that goes from Highway seventy at the corner of East Carteret High School to intersect with Highway one oh one in the vicinity of Wright Farm Road. This petition pleads this new route is necessary for relief from the constant highway flooding that occurs in this area due to king tides and storm surge. Flooding on the North River Phil, Merriman Road, and down Highway seventy towards Beaufort is a persistent safety risk of paramount importance. The National Weather Service reports the number one cause of death in storms is people driving in flooded areas. Highway seventy is the only way in and out of Down East, and forcing drivers to traverse areas known to flood is unconscionable. In addition, the petition also describes some secondary but practical aspects of such a highway, such as with parents and students' access at East Carteret High School. With the close association, we're calling this the Mariner Highway, because it will provide a safe, convenient, and even grand entrance to Down East. With this petition, I'm seeking for this time, for this line shown on the map included with the petition, representing this highway, to be included in the current update to the Carter County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. The general statute is quoted in the petition because it acknowledges the citizen right to petition the government for redress of grievances, as provided by the First Amendment of the US Constitution. Back in January via emails, the county manager said he was referring to petition to the Carter County Transportation Committee to see their comments before submitting the petition to the county commissioners. On February twenty-fourth, we met with the transportation committee, and we were allowed to explain the project, but that's where the trail ended. We have heard nothing since then. There may be a legitimate explanation, however, it's been five months. According to the law, I'm entitled for this matter to be heard by you, the elected officials of the Carter County Board of Commissioners. You were provided with a copy of the petition by the clerk a couple of weeks ago. After the agenda for this month's meeting had been set, I'm respectfully requesting guidance as to the process and schedule as to when this matter can be heard. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you, sir. And we'll, we're going to direct you to that route to the DOT, so, thank you, sir. Our next item is Deja Ramsey. If you'll just state your name and address, please.
I will. Hand this out. My name is Deja Ramsey, and I live in Carter County, 114 Straits Road, Beaufort, which is actually on Straits, you know how those addresses work. And I've been a resident of North Carolina for sixty years. I'm a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans, I'm not a spokesperson. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers over, in over twenty states. Today, I come to you as a concerned citizen, sharing alarming information about our state's voter database, uncovered through thousands of hours of research conducted by our highly qualified and credentialed data team. While the numbers are staggering and somewhat difficult to comprehend, one thing is clear, they don't add up. Just like your checkbook must balance, so must our votes. If you had ten thousand dollars fewer in the bank than you had deposited, you would certainly want to know what happened. And if a company had that significant a discrepancy in its books, the company would most certainly conduct an audit. In fact, yearly audits are required by law on all public companies. Our audit of the 2022 election, using only official data provided by state election officials, shows that the 2022 election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We are not saying one candidate won over another, or that any election should be overturned. The state's official data from a certified election shows that the votes, as counted, were not all valid and accurate under the law. Tonight, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. We're applying, we are happy to meet with you and go over this information, including more detail in the specific findings. If you have questions that I can't answer, we'll commit to getting you the answers in writing from United Sovereign America's executive team as soon as possible. The data and our request for an investigation has been shared with state election officials and law enforcement. It's essential that you, as our representatives, make it clear that these issues must be taken seriously. Today, we come to you, our closest elected representatives for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution, ask questions if you have them, and then vote promptly for its passage. Your action on this resolution will illustrate your dedication and support to the concerns of your constituents and your country. Our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Renee?
Ronnie.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Ronnie Doherty.
My name is Ronnie Doherty, I live in Williston. I'm a Carter County native of my entire life. So I will read the resolution. Resolution for illegally valid 2024 general election, whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, quote, "and the right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote, just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise," end quote. US Supreme Court Reynolds versus Sims, nineteen sixty-four. Whereas, it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Quote, "Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law," end quote. US Supreme Court N. Ray Coy, eighteen eighty-eight. Whereas, our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. Number one, the voter rolls must be accurate, per National Voter Registration Act, nineteen ninety-three. Number two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, per US Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment, Section Two. Number three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Number four, there can be no more than one in one hundred and twenty-five thousand ballots in error by the voting system, per Help America Vote Act, two thousand and two. Whereas, an open source audit of the North Carolina 2022 general election conducted by North Carolina state citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that violate both federal and state laws, including one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the North Carolina state voter roll database, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-six votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants, three hundred and ninety-two more votes counted than voters who voted in the 2022 general election. No one knows who cast them. Five hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in North Carolina was thirty, not five hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven. Certification as defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Thank you for your time.
Shirley Redford?
Shirley Redford. Nice to see you this evening, and I live at 534 Park Meadows Drive in Newport.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll be section three. Whereas, these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture and report the specific selections and abstinence of selections made by voter without error. Whereas, the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that varies from the law is an abridgement of the civil rights of the citizens, a fraud ab initio, United States versus Throckmorton in eighteen seventy-eight. From time immemorial, an election to public office has been in point of substance no more or no less than the expression by qualified electors of the choice of candidates, United States versus classic in nineteen forty-one. Whereas, North Carolina's 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of guaranteed protection of our national rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in an incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of the United States, this United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Number two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenge thirty days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and the address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Number three, hand-marked secure ballot similar to currency, where imaging technology is used for tabulation. The security features must be variable in the ballot image. Number four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud protect, prevent, sorry, fraud preventing, prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Barbara Smith?
My name is Barbara Smith, 229 Hickory Shores Drive, Newport, and you've seen me up here before. Adjudication, number five is adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediately, immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and CVRs. Number six, ballots regardless of entry source. Election operations and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to voter count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a NIST-compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a ninety-five percent confidence level of all elections pursuant to the Fourteenth Amendment, Section Two, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, issued, and bonded security, forensics or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the voter, the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of all unique variances above is more than ten percent of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected, unless the issues can be provably connected by a mutual hand recount and a full review of records. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Being resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Carteret County, North Carolina, stands in support with the concerns and remedies presented here, we implore the Carteret County Legislature, North Carolina Legislature, federal legislatures, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both state and county boards of elections to cooperate and fulfill these requests of the people.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, next speaker is Brian Nicolo.
Hi, I'm Brian Nicolo, fifteen oh two Salter Path Road. You have just heard powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election, from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. In fact, the resolution cited many of the US Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Laws are being ignored. Bottom line, the checkbook is not balancing, and we need certainty in our elections. The voting system which controls our most vitally, our most vitally important right, the right to choose representatives, is not producing inaccurate, trustworthy result. Do you think that these anomalies within our, within our election system, a system which is part of our national infrastructure, should continue to be ignored? How much is it costing us not to fix the problem? How much is it costing our GDP, our military, our foreign policy, our health, the self-esteem of our children and young people? And how much is it costing our dignity to keep fighting each other over these elections? The cost is immeasurable, so I urge you to show your agreement by passing the resolution. Our website showing, showcasing our initiatives nationwide has some extremely informative videos that explain the anomalies and apparent violations of law that are found here in North Carolina, as well as in other states. The website is uniteforfreedom.com, and again, that's unite, the number four, freedom.com. I encourage you to check it out and learn more about our organization. One more time, that's unite, number four, freedom.com. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Brian. And then our last speaker is Robert Harper. State your name and address, please, sir.
Robert Harper, ten twenty Broad Street in Beaufort. What you heard tonight is the culmination, thousands of hours of work by a highly qualified and credentialed volunteer team across the nation. Look at the big picture. Large numbers of Americans, including me right here in North Carolina, have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. I think we can all agree, and we wish this was not the case. But official data shows these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential to securing our liberty. Government representatives at all levels are not being transparent or representative or responsive to what citizen audits have found. Our right to choose our representatives in legally valid and transparent elections is the foundation upon which our constitutional republic was established. That right has been bravely protected over the past two and a half centuries by the sacrifices of our brothers, fathers, mothers, and sisters. You on this board have the chance to show everyone who defended American liberty and the citizens you represent, that you value it also, by passing this resolution demanding a valid general election in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all the speakers tonight. Item number seven is a public hearing, road name addition, Kim Complex Park, Maureen Doherty.
Hi, Maureen, how are you? Hey, good, how are you? So this is a request to add a name to the access for Complex Commercial Park. It's located off of Highway twenty-four, just outside of Morehead City Limits. And the proposal is the, the name Complex Park, and it would serve twenty units. And so we're seeking approval to add this street to the nine-one-one network.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we add the Complex Park.
Make a motion to go to public hearing.
Public hearing first, yeah.
You got a second on that?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. We're now in public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Okay.
Motion to close public hearing.
Seconds.
Got a motion to close public hearing in a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We're now out of public hearing. Any questions?
I'll make a motion, we approve the Complex Park road addition name.
All right, we got a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, we got a first and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. We can't wait to get that on the tax rolls. All right, item number eight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Item number eight is a public hearing on the proposed request to apply for funding through the North Carolina Public Beach Waterfront Access Grant to complete the Straits Water Access and Fishing Pier Improvement Project. Water Access and Fishing Pier Improvement Project, Mr. Gene Foxworth.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a requirement of the grant, and it's seeking your support, your support and authority to apply for these funds. This is for the Straits Boating Access. As y'all know, about five years ago, we entered into an agreement to assume that island and bridge going to the island where the Straits Fishing Pier is. The total grant funding that we're requesting is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It has a seventy-five thousand dollar local match, and we anticipate that we'll take possession of that island sometime this summer. Glad to answer any questions you have.
All right. Like to.
Make a public hearing again?
In the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Got a first and a second to go into public hearing, please raise your right hand. All right, we're now in public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we apply for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five grant for public beach and waterfront access.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I help amend that?
Sure.
So can we make a motion to approve the resolution to apply for the funding for the West Boeffer Road Water Access Improvement Fund?
Going to do both of them at once?
No, I'm just, I'm just helping you out, that's your motion.
Well, I'm on the Straits boat ramp up above that one.
Okay.
There's two of them there.
All right, you got that, so, okay, there you go, all right. I'm good, then, second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, now you say there's a second.
There's another one for the West Boeffer Road.
Yeah.
Am I right, Gene?
Yes, sir.
But it's still the resolution.
Right. Same, same process with the public hearing, it's just the form.
But it's item number nine, it's the next item.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, do you need to do a?
No, 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 he just, it's resolution to apply for the funding for the Straits Water Access. He had the right one, but we wanted a resolution in there. I read off the wrong one.
Okay, well, we still had to go into public hearing for the next one too, right?
Yep. And do you need to?
Just a quick brief on this, same, 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 it's the Water Access Grant, and this is just the authority to apply, and again, the resolution of support for that. This one is a total of four hundred thousand dollars, it's three hundred thousand of coastal management money and a hundred thousand of local money, and this would add sixteen parking spaces. As y'all know, that, that public boating access that the county owns and operates, it stays very busy, and this is just right there along the street, just to the east of the current park. Glad to answer any questions you have.
Motion to go into public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I need a second, got a first and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, we're now in public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
So moved. All right, got a second, first and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. We're now out of public hearing. Okay, and I just want to make sure I'm in the right place, but.
Page one eighty-four, yeah.
One eighty-four, okay.
You got it, Chris?
What's that?
The motion.
I'll make a motion, we apply for that grant as well for the West Boeffer Beach Access.
Support of the resolution.
Support of the resolution.
We got a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, item number nine is taken care of. All right, item number ten is a public hearing on the request to rezone thirteen point one four acre parcel located at eight two five Russell Creek Road to Beaufort, two eight five one six, pin number six three nine eight zero four nine four two two five seven zero 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 from R fifteen M Single Family Residential District to B dash one CZ, conditional zoning, general business conditional zoning district. All right, I need a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just give you a quick brief on this, that's okay, yes, sir. So Mike DeLuca, on behalf of George Moffett, has requested a rezone. This is conditional zoning, we've done this several times in the, in the past couple of months, y'all are familiar with the process of, there are a number of specific uses that they've asked for, and the planning commission sent y'all a recommendation to approve those, and those are mail order house, wholesale, warehouse, office, wholesale with retail business. There were thirty-seven surrounding property owners notified, we got two objections and no, no objections. So the planning commission met on June tenth and voted six, zero unanimously to recommend approving this request. Be glad to answer any questions that you have.
All right, again, is there anyone here to speak on this?
Well, I guess we need a motion to go into public hearing, right?
I thought we were already in public hearing. We are in public hearing.
A lot of public hearings tonight, it's hard to keep track.
Yeah, I got one more.
Is there particular use that they're asking for, for the conditional, what are they, did they divulge what they were looking to do to it?
So, yes, sir, in the, in the planning commission meetings, they stated that they intended to do wholesale parts sales there. But again, the, the uses were mail order house, wholesale, general warehouse, and general office, and wholesale with related retail business.
Need a motion to go out of public hearing?
Sure.
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second to go out of public hearing, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any, any questions or comments?
I move to approve the request rezoning from R fifteen M to B one CZ, general business conditional zoning. Second.
We got a first and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, that's approved, any objections? All right, item number.
How about the consistency?
Yeah, we need a consistency, we need those on the elements, that's what I was trying to get to. We need one on those.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consistency statement for reasonableness, or you going to read that?
Could I read it to you? Yes, sir.
Please do.
That's okay, yes, sir. So the planning commission finds and determines that case number two, twenty twenty-four zero 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 one four is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Camel Land Use Plan because it is adjacent to light industrial wholesale, and they have rendered to very low impact use. It is reasonable and in the public interest because neighboring properties are zoned LIW.
All right, we've heard the consistencies, you want to make a motion, we need a second?
Second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, that's unanimous. Item number eleven, our last public hearing for the night, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, public hearing request to rezone a three point zero four acre parcel located at two ten Taylor Farm Road, Beaufort, North Carolina, two eight five one six, pin number seven three zero seven zero four six two seven two seven nine zero 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 from R fifteen Single Family Residential District to IW Industrial Wholesale District. Want to make some comments?
Yes, sir, I'd like to. So Mr. Doye Rayroux is requesting to rezone this three point oh four acre parcel located at two ten Taylor Farm Road from R fifteen M to IW. Now, this is not a conditional zoning, this last one was, this is just a general rezoning that's been requested. Currently, the subject property is occupied by various construction materials, mobile homes, trailers, and vehicles. It's surrounded by farmland to the north and south, single-family dwellings to the east and west. It's also surrounded by the Town of Beaufort's ETJ, so it's there zoning to the north, Town of Beaufort's ETJ to the south, B one A to the east, and R fifteen M to the west. It is limited, it is situated in the limited transition Camel Land Use Plan classification. Twenty-eight surrounding property owners have been notified. We've received four objections and zero no objections. At the June tenth meeting, the planning commission voted six to zero to unanimously recommend denial of this request. Glad to answer any questions that you have.
You say it was a denial?
Yes, sir, it was.
All right.
Motion to go in public hearing?
Need a second?
Second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. We're now in public hearing, is there anyone here to speak on this matter?
I think there's several.
There's several, okay.
I suspect that the owner's here.
Okay.
I'm here.
You'd like?
Mr. Rabbit, the gentleman who made the request.
Okay, whoever wants to speak first, come up to the microphone.
You go ahead.
Field of state, your name and address, sir?
My name's David Parker, I live one twenty-three Courtney Lane in Beaufort.
What was that line, what was, what was the address again?
One twenty-three Courtney Lane in Beaufort.
Okay, one twenty-three Courtney Lane.
Yes.
All right, what would you like to say on the matter?
I live right beside Doye Rayroux property right there, and we've dealt with this mess for thirty-five years. Well, it's, I mean, I've been down here, like, you know, on off for thirty-five years, you know, last twenty-five years, I've owned my place right there, and I've witnessed a lot of stuff going on down there. I've witnessed, he put a bunch of big tanks in there next to my well, and told them, you know, that's got to be moved, you know, that's a lot. And I'd like to bring this to everybody's attention right now. As a gentleman next, lived on the next road to us, he worked on lawnmowers, he was a nice man. He ate a clam right over that came out of Mill Creek over there. But when the tide goes in and out, we got a stream that comes down right beside Doye's property right there, it is a wide drainage ditch. This man died. We don't know how he died. They said they took him to hospital, soon as he ate the clam, he got very sick, that they said he died of clam poisoning. Okay, if you give him the right to put all this industrial equipment, which we understand, it's got to go somewhere, I know I was in the military. I'm a Vietnam veteran, I'm disabled, I'm seventy percent disabled, seventy-three percent. But anyhow, I understand a lot of things in my life, and one thing I understand, when a place is zoned for children and their dogs or animals and whatever walks up and down that road, and you're right beside the golf course, you're right beside the cemetery. And I would like to just show you something. Would y'all like to see what I've got on this?
Sure.
It's really. This is what we're talking about. I'm going to go down here first, because they have the pictures I'd like to show you this, this right here. If you want, all right, if you want to look at this mess, this is all, now this, his land goes all the way back through here, all the way back through here, this is numerous, numerous garages, nothing but garbage stuff. Some of his is a garbage dump, in fact, he's worse than a garbage dump. He knows that. You want to see some more? You can look at it, all right? And, I mean, it goes on, and on, and on. But, you know, this right here, we got little children that play in this area, and don't seem to me like, hey, some people don't have no regard for children, all they want's that dollar bill. You know, and sometimes we got to make a decision in our life. Let me ask anyone of you, anybody here, would you want a dump in your backyard? Ain't nobody here with one, not one. If our little children dies, or if you die, hey, is that, is anybody coming there to check that property out? They said last time they didn't have the funds, Stephen, go down and look at that. What's the deal on that? I thought, you guys, I, I'm not saying it's any one person's responsibility, but if, if you're getting paid, getting a check for that, somebody else go down and look at that. Just go look at it, with your own eyes. You know, if you see an enemy, if you're in a war zone, you see an enemy, you know, you going to take care of that enemy, you going to try to eliminate him, some other. But if you've got an enemy in your yard, and they're hurting your little kids or your animals, and you, you smell the stench over there, and if you want to listen to something, nobody, I've got it recorded right here. You know, you can hear the banging and flinging all the way here to Beaufort, and I'm sure the people, right there, it's building new homes right there on the golf course, that's right beside the golf course, they're not, they're not happy with this. Ain't nobody happy with this. People getting buried, they're not happy with this. This is all about money, putting stuff, and let me tell you something, there's plenty of land back here where the deer hunters go, they take it to put the industrial dump or whatever, garbage or whatever you want to call it. I just showed you pictures of everything in there, and if you, I, I challenge you to come down and look at it, just look at it with your own eyes.
All right, well, thank you, sir, we greatly appreciate it. I'm sorry, I missed your last name, I didn't hear it.
My name's David Parker.
David Parker.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
All right, is there anyone else here to speak on it?
My name is Bobby Strickland, and I'm an attorney from Havelock, I've been practicing in Craven Carter about thirty-seven years now, and my focus is primarily the real property issues. I represent Scott Taylor, actually Jeff Scott Taylor, he's the owner of multiple surrounding He brought to me back in May copies of the request by Mr. Ray to have his property rezoned, and on his behalf, I filed one, I filed six objections, objections. Mr. Taylor owns more than six properties that are joined Mr. Ray's property, but six is what I got, so six is what I filed. I do mirror a lot of what Mr. Parker said, but what I put in my letter is that, on the These are all residential, as you can see, everyone, single-family residential. This is zoned residential, it's in violation of residential zoning regulations, has been violated, from my understanding from Mr. Foxworth, that they are still in the process of issued violation notices to Mr. Ray, and this rezoning request is an attempt to avoid those by asking you to approve what he's already been doing, which is a violation by rezoning. In other words, I did something wrong, if you just claim that it's not wrong anymore, we'll all be fine.
Let me get, excuse me for one second, let me get that straight, so the lots on Courtney and Lake Road are in violation because of?
No, 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 Mr. Ray's in violation.
In violation, okay.
These lot is in violation.
Right.
All of these are single-family, they all have single-family homes, okay? This thing here, and you can see multiple mobile homes and trash and all sorts of junk, it's supposed to be a single-family parcel, and three acres could be subdivided into three or four lots, and that would still be in compliance with R fifteen M, but what's out there now is nothing's in compliance with current ordinance, and he's asking you folks to say, well, I violated the ordinance, but if you change and make me in a different zone, then I won't be in violation anymore. Now, that's what he's done, but the thing is, it's not compatible with R fifteen M, what he's doing and what he's requesting. I mean, who wants to step out that back door and right up against their binder line is a junkyard? I mean, literally, that's what they asked for. is a junkyard? I mean, literally, that's what they asked for. They asked for permission to put a junkyard in the property immediately adjacent to four single-family homes and a whole subdivision, single-family homes. Uh, well, first thing it's gonna do is devalue all of these homes right here immediately, all right? Um, they've already subject to that because he's in violation of the current ordinance, okay? Uh, next, we believe that some of the stuff he has put out there has leaked into the groundwater. Uh, and on the violation notice that he sent, uh, what should be added to that, if it hasn't been, is he probably needs to do a phase one to make sure, so that he'll know what has or has not seeped into the groundwater. Uh, it's potentially environmental hazard. Uh, but if you let him turn it to a junkyard, it'd be a guaranteed environmental hazard in every area out there. Um, I really don't know what else to say. That doesn't prevent you. I don't even know that anything would. Uh, he has violated your current ordinances, and he's asking he can continue doing what he's doing, but just call it not a violation anymore. Uh, it's inappropriate. Nobody wants their home next to a junkyard. That's not appropriate. When these folks bought their homes, that land was zoned, single-family, uh, single-family residential, just like there. They expected the county to keep it that way, protect the value of their homes, and that's what the county should do, all right? I mean, does anybody have any questions with me?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Questions? Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other people to speak on the subject?
Can we zoom out on that map to, to see the, uh, or do we have a better map that shows the golf course and shows the rest of the property? Or is that to the north?
I can pull it up with GIS. I just need a second.
Did you like to speak?
I would.
Field of State, your name and address, please.
Winter's Rest Road. Is that part of the golf course, up here?
It is, yes, sir.
My name is Mary Saster Holloway, and I live at thirty-one oh one of Randall Street in Morbid City. Um, I have a question. If this man is storing these things in a residential property, what assistance has he been offered in cleaning this up prior to this sort of land grab, if you will, in terms of rezoning? It seems like maybe there should have been some negotiations and assistances to clean up the junk. It doesn't appear that anybody can live there, but maybe beyond his capability to clean it up, and that might be his desire. So that's my question.
So, so what you're asking is, is if he cleaned, if he cleaned it up, could he still have it as basically zoned as a junkyard? If he went in there and cleaned it and then called it a junk, and then we zoned it for a junkyard after he cleans it? Is that what your question is? It's not a land, it's not a land grab.
I thought that the reason for having the zoning as a junkyard is so that it's not in violation of residential. But if he could keep it residential and clean it up, then there shouldn't be a problem. So my question is, were there any moves to be made to help him clean it up so it wasn't a problem?
That's a great question.
That's my question.
Thank you.
I'm confused. I don't, I'm not, so you, I go mess something up, and I do something wrong, and then somebody's supposed to help me fix it?
Uh, well, it depends on, uh, how it, what it takes to get rid of the mess up.
No, no, if, if I mess something up, I, I did it. I'm the responsible party, but now I want you to come fix it up 'cause I messed it up. I mean, is that what you're really asking?
Oh, well, I'm asking what assistance was given, if any, or any consideration for that.
For somebody who breaks the law, I'm supposed to give assistance?
Well...
Are you really asking that in this meeting tonight? Are you serious?
I'm asking.
Are you serious?
Yeah, I'm asking that question.
All right, I, I think we, okay, I appreciate the question.
I think it was mentioned in the beginning that it was in violation by not us, but someone else.
He, he's been sent notices.
Since the sent notices, that's what I heard earlier. Okay.
But, I mean, we didn't do anything to mess that up. We...
It's, it's an R, it's zoned right now as R-15, correct?
It is, and we have an act of violation.
Right.
Mr. Foxworth?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ruvefield?
There's a bunch of trailers and, uh, what's up selling here? It's various construction materials, mobile homes, trailers, and vehicles. Is any of that serviceable? Are those mobile homes occupied? Are they just junk?
They do not appear to be, no, sir. None of it appear to be serviced.
Are there any of the vehicles have license plates on them?
They do not appear to, no, sir.
All right, well, this probably didn't get this way overnight. So how did it get to this state without the county realizing, hey, this is a violation of the zoning ordinances?
Two things. I believe it's kind of out of sight, out of mind where it is, and when we received...
Say it again?
It's kind of out of sight, out of mind where it is. And so I believe we did not receive a complaint for quite some time. When we did receive a complaint, we went out and addressed it and sent the notice of violation.
Yeah, it looks like it's got tree coverage around it. And, uh, all right, um, anybody else here to speak on this matter?
If you will. Any questions?
Uh, if you'll come up and state your name and address.
My name is Doy Ray Rue. I'm seventy-four years old, resident of Carter County, and I have done a lot of work. Nobody has left me anything. I have bought and paid for my land and keep my taxes paid by doing services for the county, the town, and all. I'm stuck with this stuff right now. I have seen, uh, recycling items at the time. Some of them, I've got caught with them because I can't not do what I used to do by cleaning, burning, and stuff. The rules has changed. The fact that I got sick, had heart trouble, the fact that COVID has come in, the fact that I can't hire nobody, I don't have the money to do it. I'm not against what the county's asked me to do. I've cleaned up everybody else's mess. I have got it stuck with it, and I am cleaning up this mess. I can't do it overnight. I've tried. I'm, I'm doing what they asked. The next advice was, I'm not trying to rezone anything to get away with anything. I'm a house mover. I pick up, uh, houses, put new foundations under them, and I have steel beams. I have wooden blocks that I now have cluttered other places that I own because of it. Trying to keep on working, trying to keep on making a living, and here I am with a, a problem. The problem that I have is that I've got so much stuff that I've got to get rid of. I cannot, uh, burn it. I've got to process it. I'm saving all of my receipts with all the scrap that I'm carrying to Fossis and getting rid of. I'm taking that same amount of money, carrying it to the Carter County landfill, paying them for taking this and what I'm doing. I'm not against cleaning it up. I'm all for it. I want to clean it up. I'm not trying to get away with anything. I created it. The gentleman's right when he says, "Do I expect any help?" "No, but I do expect. Give me a little more time, and I'll make you proud of it."
Thank you, sir. We still in public comment?
We're still in public comment, yeah. Anybody else wants to speak?
The gene across the street is at the golf course property coming down Tattlewood Drive.
Yes, sir.
So that's the town of Beaufort, ETJ?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make one more statement if I may.
If you'll please come up so we can get it on the, thank you, sir.
I love working. I have steel beams that are sixty-foot, some odd fifty-foot, variable lengths that I use in raising houses. The problem that I have, and the problem has occurred, the fact that, uh, they apply, the, the, the problem had occurred when I left these steel beams on a, uh, job that I purchased a property and moved a house for the airport. I left them in the front yard. I had a permit to work on this house, do what I've done. Anyhow, it become a eyesore. It isn't the product that I have, it's what people see that becomes a problem. Why? Again, I don't know what to do other than do what you asked, and that's what I'm doing. But I do need a place to put these steel beams and these blocks of wood that I got for my business house move. I'm being forced out of that, of working because of help, labor. I can't find nobody to work. I used to have problems, Cherry Point pay scale. Now I can't even compete with welfare pay scale. Nobody wants to work this hard work that I do. I have managed to do this hard work to make a living. And now I'm getting to the point of being retirement, but I, now I can't retire till I get this mess cleaned up. So, uh, even if y'all approve or don't approve, I'm not, all I ask is more time to get this place cleaned up. I have several places, and I'm taking one at a time and to do just that. They are sending me, uh, letters, charging me per day, uh, to, uh, clean this mess up. They now sent me a bill for two hundred and some odd thousand dollars because I'm in violation, zoning violation, on every one of these sites because somebody's don't want me to do something. I can't have nothing parked in the yard that, uh, constructional or, and all these projects that I have, I got four locations that I'm doing the work on that building material is on the site. And it don't look good, but I, that's the best that I can do. I'm trying to get it done. Uh, and again, like I said, uh, I don't know what to say. I don't even know what to do anymore. I've been pushed, and I'm not against it. I'm gonna keep on working till I die, but I will get it cleaned up. I will get it organized. I cannot clean it up unless I dig a hole and bury it. That's against the law. I can't burn it. That's against the law. So I've been pushed in a corner of spending money I don't have, can't get no help that I can't get. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not against Mr. Taylor. I'm not against the lawyer there of condemning my property of, uh, chemical. Be my guest. The county had a test, or the county tested it when they approached me about purchasing a front acre to put the water tower at Taylor Farm. They come out and test it and all that. In the meantime, Mr. Taylor's father intervened and made an opposition for to put a water tower over on their site. The chemical compounds that is, may or may not be, that this string that this gentleman is talking about, is all this work that's been done from the county on the highway, the pond that's over there, is dug, the, uh, all the dirt on this freeway, the roads. I'm not damaging roads. They dug the water ponds up deep, the silt sand, sinkholes is coming in the roads. I, there's no damage that I've done. It's just the way it's been. All of these things that these gentlemen is complaining about, yes, I got, I got away with it, but I didn't realize that I was breaking the law. I just recently, until Mr. Foxworth approached me to tell me what I've been doing, being wrong, I'm not against, I just need the time to clean it up, that's all, without being threatened. I'm doing everything I can.
Mr. Rue, I think we understand your situation. We're sympathetic.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm in the business myself, and I know how easy it is to accumulate a whole bunch of crap you're not gonna use or save it for another day. Are you still in the business of moving buildings?
Yes, yes, sir, I am.
And you have material scattered over four different sites as a result of moving buildings?
Have been, yes, sir. I have tried to relocate by cleaning, moving stuff to one location, which was Taylor Farm.
Now, all this stuff that's on this tract of land, you need to have all of that? Or how much of it is actually junk?
That's the very same stuff that I'm doing now, getting rid of, all the stuff that I'm stuck with.
Is any of it usable in moving buildings?
Not the stuff that I'm getting rid of, no, sir.
Okay. Have you considered contacting scrap metal dealers, come on in and take this stuff away for free?
That'd be nice if you can get them to do it. But here's what the problem is. I can get Foss to put a container down. They will come in and get all the steel scrap stuff, but they won't get none of the trash, as y'all saying to think, the buildings, the wood and stuff. They don't want that. They won't. So here I am, I'm trying to, uh, sell the good stuff to take the money to pay for the bad stuff at the landfill. And it eats it up pretty fast at fifty-five dollars a ton.
How much time do you think you'll need to, to clean this up?
If you give me another six months, I can have Taylor Farm in presentable. Uh, just Taylor Farm. Now, the other locations that I have, uh, that, that I do have, uh, I site is cluttered. This is stuff I do use, trailers, uh, aluminum mats, uh, everything that I've got. Most, in fact, everything on Taylor Farm, uh, is still on wheels. That was one of the points, uh, I just work myself in a corner. That's all it is to it. I get, uh, like I said, I don't know what to say. Uh, don't know what I'm asking for, to tell you the truth.
How about this, Doy Ray?
Sir?
How about this? How about you withdraw your application to rezonate?
All right.
And we give you six months to clean up Taylor Farm Road and work on cleaning the rest of your properties up so the county don't have to try to seek any fines out of you?
That's...
That'd be the best scenario for everybody.
Yes, sir. I, I agree with that, even though, uh, due to the fact of the heat and stuff I'm doing, like I said...
We understand.
I feel like I can, uh, do a big dent on Taylor Farm. All the other locations, uh, I think, I, I feel like I've got them in, uh, presentable. Who makes the calls is Mr. Foxworth.
Is that possible for him to withdraw his application for rezoning?
He can withdraw his application, but we will have to research whether or not all of the fines can actually be waived. There might be a way to go about entering into an agreement with him where that could be brought down to a more manageable level. But we're, I'll be happy to look into that.
We're not here about the fines and the other property tonight unless this, we're here about the rezoning request. So if you'd like to withdraw your motion to rezonate, and you're gonna work on getting this piece of property cleaned up first, and then work on the other pieces, we'll do our best to bear with you.
I appreciate it.
As long as the law allows it.
As long as the law allows.
Because I, I understand your problem. I sympathize also, but we still have...
This property's been in this shape a long time, but, uh...
Yes, sir. Uh, the same, if I may say this, the same piece of property to allow me to do this work that I was in, I rezoned ten acres. In the meantime, through a separation, the court took all of this away from me, even though I probably should've been smart enough to stop and fall in with it, but I didn't. I kept on working, tried to overcome what, uh, the court had done by taking, uh, this land from me, my home and all this other stuff, uh, which you can read about it in the law book, Rue versus Rue. Uh, in the same time, like I said, I'm not, uh, if you call me up to come do something, and if I can, I'm gonna do it. And, and do it as cheap as I can, hoping in recycling, uh, it's, I use the example, that TV over there, all these TV, it costs money. They create a problem. And the problem of it is when nobody... They create a problem, and the problem of it is when nobody wants it no more, it goes bad. The process of getting rid of TVs now is limited of getting rid of them. The scrapyard don't want them, microwaves and all that stuff, all of these things has to be handled one at a time to carry at the location that they have to put these TVs. That's just a small example. The county has required everything to be going to the dump. Okay, no problem. It takes money, trucks, insurance, tires, labor, to do all this stuff, and I'm knowing that. I have made money. Like I said, nobody's gave me anything. I bought, paid for everything by scrapping, or junking, or doing these things that you have to do to get where you need to be. And my taxes is paid. The grass, it keeps growing. You cut the grass, you better watch out, next week you're gonna do it again. So my life is being just that way. You live your life like cutting your grass. If you don't keep your grass cut, it gets away from you. And this is what has happened, but I still believe that I can take care of this problem.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak tonight? All right, I think we have a motion on the floor, or are we still in public hearings? Somebody need to go out of public hearing.
Do I withdraw it?
If he withdraws his application, his case is over.
I would withdraw it if the managing attorney...
We just voted to deny the request that you had of it.
...passing all these fines.
Well, we can't guarantee that, though, till we know...
No, I, I'm withdrawing.
That's a simple question.
Hound out the majority rule, I realize that.
Okay, so if he, if he, okay, we're...
Motion by a public hearing first.
So, yeah, you got a first and a second to go out of public hearing. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. So the question is, he's just withdrawn the motion, I mean...
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny the request, the rezoning request.
Okay.
If he withdraws his request, there is no request.
That's why we asked for a return of camp.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it changes the outcome for him one way or the other. So, and we can't really make it conditional on something that we may not be able to do.
But we can still look into what?
Of course we can look into it, and I think Mr. Foxworth has talked to him several times and is trying to work out a plan with him.
Can you share that with us?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is, and I won't get into the multiple code violations, I'll just tell you that there were multiple code violations, there've been two of them that he has cleaned up and have been removed from that list. He's not being fined for them anymore, and he keeps working his way slowly but surely towards compliance.
Okay, and is that this property or other properties?
Other properties.
Other properties.
So let me ask you a question. I mean, I know the law, the way the law's set up, but if we continue to fine him and bankrupt him, how's he ever gonna clean the property up?
I understand. What, what are the options do we have once we start those fines and he's not complying?
And then he makes, then he makes a good point, too, that what you used to were able to do to dispose of property that he did a long time ago, that has accumulated there that we've never said anything to him prior to now, where he could've gotten rid of it maybe before, now he can't get rid of it because of the regulations getting stricter and stricter. I mean, my question is, along with his, when all these electric cars start going bad, what are we gonna do?
Oh, you're exactly right. And we fight that battle, we fight that battle with the Solid Waste Authority with electronics recycling and the solar farms, and I mean, there's, there's a lot of that, for sure.
I mean, it's the same thing, that you can't catch red snapper because they say that they're extinct, but you go out there to catch a grouper, you can't catch a grouper because you keep catching red snappers.
That's right. That's exactly right.
You can't even catch a mallet on Saturday. The world's going to hell, quick.
Exactly right.
So, I mean, I think that if we're out, there is something we can do to address the situation, but I mean, we gotta make sure we follow the law.
Agreed wholeheartedly.
So the, the topic tonight is zoning. So why don't we handle the zoning and then...
So, so there's a motion on the floor to deny the rezon, and the planning board denied six oh, is there a second is the question?
Okay. And then are we gonna have any discussion about that?
But he also offered to withdraw his application, so it's a six of one, half dozen of the other, you know, maybe consider selling some of the properties.
I'd be glad to, find somebody who wants to buy.
We're gonna have to give that one away, I'm sorry. Because of real estate brokerage.
Might have to clean it up first.
All right, we, the, the one thing I have to clarify is, he made a motion to work with him on it, so we're gonna hold that out until after we vote on the second motion.
Okay, is there a second for Commissioner Chadwick's motion?
Is, is there a second?
Well, he, I've just asked him to withdraw his rezoning request, and then he said he withdrew, he withdrew it.
So now we have another motion on the...
His case open, sound like me.
Let's go with, let's go with, let's go with, he did the first motion.
You're the chairman.
No, I didn't make an actual motion.
You didn't make, you made a conversation, okay.
I asked him if he would withdraw his rezoning request, and he said, yeah. So in my mind, there's nothing else to consider because he's withdrew it.
Madam Attorney.
I don't know that there was a motion on the floor. If you want to deal with that, you can, but I know that right now there's a motion to deny on the floor, so I would deal with that first. And as far as working with him, that's certainly something we can look into. The important thing is that all citizens are treated the same, so we have to give some weight in regard to that. So this is a zoning violation. The fact that it hasn't been a zoning violation in the past really is not of impact legally. The planning, our planning department has a limited number of personnel, just like every county in North Carolina, they don't go around like police officers checking everybody's property. They work on complaints. So when they get complaints, they go out and look and see what's going on, and that's, that's where the timing comes in.
I understand that, but we're not here tonight for a zoning violation, we're here for a rezoning request.
I take what she's saying is...
We've got two problems.
We've got two problems. Let's get, let's get, let's take care of the first motion that was made.
Right.
Please restate your motion.
Item before the board is to consider a rezoning request for a 3.04 acre parcel located at 210 Taylor Farm Road in Beaufort. PIN number 73070462727900. Request is to rezon from R15M, which is single-family residential, to IW, which is industrial warehouse district. A motion to deny the request.
All right, do we have a second? A second on his motion that he just made?
May I ask just a couple of quick questions, not to beat this to death. Gene, the property beside it, 214, appears to be farmland?
Give me just a second to get flipped it up.
Right behind you looks like it.
Yes, sir, there, there is a residence there, but the rest, the balance of it is farmland, yes, sir.
So if, if this is denied as requested, excuse me, there's a reason I'm asking this, but if this is denied as requested, it can't be brought back again for consideration as a rezon for this, is that correct?
It can after a waiting period, but yes, sir.
Six months.
Six months, yes, sir.
Okay, in light of that, I'll second Mr. Kavanaugh's motion.
Okay. And all those in favor, okay, we got a first and a second. All those in favor of Mr. Kavanaugh's motion, please raise your right hand. All right, now, it's done, no consistency needed?
Yes, sir, you do need a consistency.
Okay, well, do you need to state the consistency if somebody...
I'll be glad to read it if you'd like me to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Planning Commission finds and determines that case number 2024-000041 is not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Camellanians' plan because junkyards violate the residential area and it's not good policy. It is not reachable in the public interest, interest because it is a nuisance. The IW is not consistent with the best interest of this county in the surrounding area.
Okay, need to make a motion to accept that?
Make a motion to accept, approve.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. All those in favor of the consistency report, is unanimous? All right, now, just one last discussion that we said we were gonna have. Am I right or wrong? After we voted on it, we said we were gonna ask what Commissioner Chadwick said about him cleaning up his property. So now we're in a situation where the zoning is not gonna happen. He's got the property, he's asking for six months to clean it up. We can't take away the penalties or anything that we know of, as of right now, correct? We're, we're still under the...
We need to check on that and talk about that, yes.
Okay. All right.
Does the penalty continue to accrue during this six-month period?
He's...
Again, we'll have to check on that and look at that, see what the law says on it.
Now, so being as these laws and environmental regulations have changed, is there anything from the state where they assist in cleanups like this?
Any type of grants or anything that he could possibly go after?
The state has in the past had some cleanup money. I don't know if there's any currently, but I can certainly check.
Okay.
If you can, and communicate with Mr. Doy Ray, see if we can help him get it cleaned up.
Sure.
Right.
You hear that?
Man works his whole life in the...
I'm hard to get what you're saying.
Gene is gonna research some state grants and stuff that may help you clean up your property. In the meantime, we want you to be cleaning it up, and hopefully in six months, you'll come back and you tell us it's all clean. How's that?
That's fine. I, I, one more comment. These places that I've been in violations, Mr. Foxworth has approved or disapproved. Taylor Grove Road, is that completed?
It is, yes, sir.
So you're making some headway, sounds like.
It is.
Yeah, I've got four places I already got, and, but like I said, I didn't have to rezon it just to get away from this. It's not that easy at all. I, I don't, I just been at a disadvantage a lot of, lot of things, a lot of flat cars, you might say. So I'm not against, like I said, I'm not against what's going on, I just trying to do what you asked.
Well, Mr. Foxworth will give us an update in six months, how it's, if it's cleaned up or not, how's that?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
All right, and item number 12 is the manager's report, Mr. Burns.
Y'all agree with me?
Yes, sir.
You don't get logged up tonight, Mr. Ray. I'm just joking, I'm just joking.
I say it like this, which, I'm not trying to be ugly, I'm just saying to Mr. Foxworth, when he approached me about these fines, I said, charge me what you want to, I can't pay it. If you wanna take the land, go ahead and take it, and I won't have to clean it up. But adding the policy, I, I know that. I, I, they worked, the county's worked with me. I've been notified of breaking the law. And I just need time to correct.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Mr. Burns?
Kinda tough one to follow.
Yes, sir.
He needs to go forward.
Doy Ray's always tough to follow.
I think we all feel it's pain, starting to find any help to do anything nowadays.
He's a hard worker when he's there with us.
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
I just have one thing, it's, it's light material. Mayor Barber from Newport asked me to invite all of you and to the, the public to the Carrick County Coast Guard Community Association Appreciation Dinner. It's on July the 27th from 5:30 to 9:00 PM at the Civic Center. Dr. Greg Murphy, our representative in Congress, is the keynote speaker, and it's open to all past and present Coast Guard unit members, friends of the Coast Guard, and the Carrick County citizenry as a whole. So I did tell Mayor Barber I would make sure that that was announced, and I've got additional information if anyone would like to RSVP because they did request that for a head count. And in the interest of time tonight, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, our next item is, is appointments. Did you move the community college to, you wanna just do that one first?
You can.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mort Congleton to the Community College Board.
All right. All those in favor of Otis Morton Congleton to the Carrick Community College Board of Trustees, please raise your right hand. All right, so that one's done. All right, the Consolidated Human Services Board, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Lindsey Creach to fill that position.
All those in favor of Lindsey Creach, I'm sorry, all those in favor of Lindsey Creach, please raise your right hand, that's unanimous. All right, the Carrick...
Were we gonna table the hospital board?
Yeah, there was one commissioner vacancy that you wanna handle.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll nominate you as the commissioner vacancy, fill the commissioner vacancy and table the others.
All right, I'm not gonna ask for the vote because it's for me, so...
All those in favor.
All right, I closed my eyes.
Stay with you, Nallas.
All right, the next item is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Mr. Commissioner, I'd like to recommend Jessica Mayo, the Parks and Recreation Representative, it's a two-year term.
All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That's approved. Carrick County Planning Board Commission, Mike Law's reappointment to a three-year term, he's the only applicant. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Senior Citizen Advisory Board, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend Cherry Tripp to reappointment for three years.
All those in favor, favor of Cherry Tripp?
I'm sorry, it was a two-year, two-year term.
All those in favor of Cherry Tripp to a two-year term, reappointment, please raise your right hand. The Town of Warhead City Planning Board, ETJ, one applicant, Daniel Fischler Senior.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Daniel Fischler Senior to a three-year term.
All those in favor of Daniel Fischler Senior, raise your right hand. All right. Carrick County Zoning Board of Adjustment, Mr. Robert Buckley, appointment to an alternate seat, three-year term.
I'll nominate Mr. Buckley.
All right, all those in favor of Mr. Robert Buckley, please raise your right hand. All right, that is, we got one more. The, the Carrick County Tourism Development Authority Beach Commission has a board member that is no longer able to serve on that board, so we need to remove that person from the board.
I'll make a motion to remove Ms. Gray from the TDA at this town.
Okay, and I think it's due to her not being a realtor, or doing real estate in this, this capacity.
And, and she's also missed three consecutive meetings, which technically disqualifies her from serving.
All right, all those in favor to remove that person from that board?
Can I get a second, please?
A second?
Second.
Need a second, okay. All those in favor to remove that person from that board, raise your right hand? All right, that's unanimous. All right, okay, so we're now on Commissioner Comments, and I'll start with you, Commissioner Quinn.
Just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Certainly congratulate Phoebe Stanley for being the Boys and Girls Club representative. I think she's gonna do a fine job, and I'm gonna keep my short, but thank you very much.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, Commissioner Chadwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the resolution the ladies presented tonight about keeping our elections fair and transparent. I do support that. See what I have to do, whatever time we need to consider that, see how the rest of the board members feel. Someone said one time, it don't matter who cast the votes, it matters who counts the vote. So we want to make sure definitely we have fair elections and keep President Trump and the other folks in your prayers, recently assassination attempt, and the people that were there at the rally, a young man lost his life, he was a firefighter, that could have easily been me in Greenville, North Carolina, or many other people here in the county that attend events like that, and just, just senseless. Just because you disagree with someone politically don't mean you need to hate them or try to take them out. So certainly we want our thoughts and prayers to be with those that are injured and those families that lost a loved one. Other than that, everybody have a good night.
Commissioner Shen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief as well. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. I'll reread the comments made by Commissioner Chadwick, this tragic situation with, with President Trump, so obviously keep all of those folks in your thoughts and prayers. I don't have a whole lot other than that. I hope everybody enjoyed their Fourth of July weekend. It's been an excessively hot last few days, it's gonna be, so please be safe, stay hydrated and initiate as much as possible. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
During the public comments section, there's a lot of...
It's been an excessively hot last few days, it's gonna be, so please be safe, stay hydrated and initiate as much as possible. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah, during the, uh, public comments section, there's a lot of, a reading was done on this resolution. We made a decision on this, we gonna talk about this in closed session, or...
I think we can talk about it, we haven't made any decisions.
Okay.
We just received that resolution tonight.
Other than that, I have no comments.
All right, Commissioner Ranswell?
I'll just reiterate all the comments of the other commissioners and, uh, hope everybody had a happy Fourth of July. I hope you enjoy the rest of your summer. If you're taking a vacation, please be safe and enjoy it, and hopefully it will be a great summer. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and have a good night.
All right, and I, I just wanted to, uh, take a minute to, um, thank Bob Kavanaugh. As you hear us talk about these, um, commissioner appointments to these different boards, you obviously hear me calling his name out on several of their boards. I think he serves on more boards than any of us up here. I know he does, um, puts a lot into what he's doing, um, and, uh, thank you, Bob, for all you do.
Wanna get a paper, please?
Yeah, well...
You'll be lifted.
Yeah. Come on down to my shop and I'll put you in the bucket of the truck, or I'll raise you up. And then I also wanna, wanna thank, uh, Mayor Barber, um, I call him Mayor Barber. Cat, what is he, may, is he Captain Barber?
Retired.
He's retired.
Retired major.
Retired major.
He's the mayor major.
Well, I, I would just wanna tell you that, um, he's a good dude. He's a good man. He, he, um, he took me by the hand when I, when I came on as a commissioner related to, um, the, um, substance abuse and the different issues that were happening in the county. And I will say that Mayor Barber has done a lot, um, with his own time and resources when we didn't have the resources we have now. As Commissioner, um, Robinson said in the past, how much is too much? Well, we, it's always, there's always more we can do, but he did it when there was no, there was nothing there. And helped people, and he's been an inspiration for me, I'm sure a lot of people on this board. And we're gonna miss him, uh, in retirement, but I don't think we're gonna, I don't think he's going anywhere.
I was going back and in and out.
That's right, he's coming back. I think he's gonna try to quadruple dip, if you could do that. But he's, he's a good person, done a lot, um, in our, in our, um, in our, in our consent agenda. I think tonight he was, he, he's gonna receive his badge and his service sidearm and... But he's done so much for this county that, um, everybody knows it, um, and I just appreciate everything he's done for me. And then, of course, the whole big issue we had this weekend, um, you know, assassination attempt and, you know, the death of, of that fine man that tried to save his family and the people who are still in the hospital. But the main thing is, is, um, had a, had a comment, had a, uh, call with him this morning, Mark, and could you imagine what today would be with, you know, if it would've went the wrong direction? I mean, if it would've been just one inch closer. So we just need to keep all that in our thoughts and prayers, and I look forward to, uh, a very exciting, um, convention. And, um, thank God we live in Emerald Isle, I mean, sorry, Carrick County.
We don't, but you do.
Thank God we live in Carrick County, and, uh, I say it all the time and I'll say it again, um, uh, we're very fortunate Congressman Murphy is gonna be speaking in Emerald Isle. I think it's this Friday, is that right? And I just invite everybody to come out and, and listen to his speech. If there is one person that I can point out that's done a lot for our county, you see him on all the different news channels, the good ones and the bad ones. But he, he stands up for us and, uh, he's a Carrick, he has a place here in Carrick County, and, um, it's nice to know that he's representing us. And, uh, let's all say a little prayer for him. He's dealt with some health issues here lately, I think he's recovered from that fine. But, uh, thank you for everybody coming out, and I, I, I hope that Mr. Rue can get his property cleaned up. And I underst, I think, I think we all have to realize what he's going through. It's, it's, that's not an easy task. I bought some property, it had some old trailers on it, I was able to, you know, crunch them up and put them in a couple recycling bins, I had the resources to do that. But what he's trying to do is, is gonna be a big task, and I hope we can help him in any way with that. And then I, I, I also agree with this, and I guess our next step will be a discussion about maybe putting it on the future agenda, and we'll discuss that later. But, uh, thank you again for coming out, have a good night.
Hard to crunch up sixteen bird.
Wanna go and, wanna, wanna make a motion?